Council meeting tomorrow, Monday, October 23rd. We have, we should have Reverend Pat Davy to give the prayer.
Good evening. Thank you all for inviting me for this. Really appreciate it. Let's pray together. Gracious God, we thank you for getting to live in such a beautiful place that in so many ways reflects your beauty and your creativity. Father, we thank you for our mayor, we thank you for our city council. You are the ruler of the nations, and it's no accident that you have so worked in their lives to serve in this community in this way. We thank you for Mayor Sullivan, we thank you for our councilmen. We thank you, Father, for giving them such a love for this community, and particularly for the young people of this community. We thank you, Father, for the ways that they walk their talk in serving our schools and athletic teams and clubs that foster a future for area young people. Father, when it's increasingly rare to find that you have given to our community a mayor and a city council who love and are involved in churches in our community, and that is no small gift, we thank you for that. Father, we pray that you would grant unity to this body, that you would grant us as citizens in this community grateful hearts for what they do. I just can't imagine the grind of serving and the frustration and challenges of that day-to-day grind of serving, and how that must deplete their energy and their relationships. So we pray that you would renew their strength, we pray that you would renew their vision, that you would move in the hearts of those of us in this community to serve in this community and to be a blessing really to them, and give them an ability to enjoy their work even in times where it's really challenging. Give them a vision for the future of our community that will lead to just the ongoing flourishing of this community in a way that honors you and serves the common good. We pray that you would protect them from divisiveness and contentiousness, we pray that you would protect our community from that as well. Enable this body, Father, to extend grace to one another when they disagree, enable us in the community to do the same with each other and also the same with them. Father, you promised to give your people wisdom when we ask you for it, so we do ask you for it, and we pray that you would just guide and direct every decision that is made. We pray for good thinking that would lead to good decisions that would serve the ultimate good of citizens of this community. We thank you for the great blessing of civil government, and we pray that you would protect this council and use them, Father, for the flourishing of Fairhope, and we pray this in Christ's name.
Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisual, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Martin, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item sixteen and also to move items thirty-four. You want to go ahead with the special events license? Mayor, do you recommend we move those up as well? We could, right? I'm going to say items thirty-four through thirty-nine. Place those before item five, so right after council comments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So we will rearrange that. So we're doing thirty-seven, what are we doing?
Thirty-four through thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, so we do, I would take care of all of those, okay. We included the rest of those, I was wondering if we want to be fair. Yeah, okay. All right. All right, very good. So item one on the agenda is approval of minutes for the October the ninth, 2023 Redwood City Council meeting. Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Report from the mayor.
I just have a few items tonight. First, there's a lot going on this week, probably as y'all know. I almost feel like this time of the year is really kicking off the holiday season because it starts getting so busy the end of October through the end of the year. But this week, we have coffee with the mayor at nine o'clock on Thursday at the rec center, and that's a really a good informal time for folks to come and ask questions. I'll give a brief overview of what's going on in the city, probably talk about the new budget, and then give people a chance for questions and answers. Also, we have down, we have the witches ride on Thursday, so just want folks to be mindful that there will be some street closures downtown. We have seven hundred and fifty, I think, entries in that event, and this will be the first year that we have barricaded that whole route. We also have downtown trick-or-treat on Friday with Fairhope Elementary School West. All those kids will be downtown trick-or-treating, and then downtown trick-or-treating also on Saturday morning where some of the streets will close between eight and twelve. That's always a fun time. If you've not been, it's a great chance to come out and see all the kids from town, downtown trick-or-treating. And with that being said, that's really all I have, but I'm going to turn it over to three ladies who are here to talk about the Fairhope High School 100th Year Celebration. Linda Higby-Smith, Lynn Tate, and Mary Louise Nelson have been working tirelessly on this event, have just got a great weekend planned the week of November, the weekend of November fourth, so I'm going to let them give you an update.
Thank you. I'm a retired educator, so anything that we can do to support the schools in any capacity, I'm all in. And so when Mary Louise Nelson caught me in the Winn-Dixie Dairy Department about two years ago, that's how long she's been working on this and asked me to help, there was no way that we were not going to get this done. The first thing that we did, and I hope some of y'all got to see the homecoming parade in late September, I know Councilwoman Conyers had to have because his daughter did all of the organization for the high school. We had about twenty-five floats. We also need to thank the city and Shane Nolte for keeping us all safe. He had about three meetings with us to make sure that we understood all the rules, and we had a grand time, so I hope that you all have heard about that, maybe saw it, and the highlight for me was that we had a cheerleader from 1955 that came from Virginia to ride on the alumni cheerleader float. Now, we ought to give her a hand. I mean, that's fabulous. Okay, so that was the kickoff.
Did she wear a skirt is what I want to know?
Well, they didn't wear their, they just wore Fairhope High School t-shirts, but Lynn Tate here made her a ribbon that said Cheerleader 1955, and she was in the back, and she could have been the homecoming queen that day because she was having a grand time. So anyway, that was fabulous. We live in such a wonderful community that is so supportive of our schools, and it's a great way for us to have fun together and to, you know, kind of bring everybody on the same page. So the next thing that's going on will be on the third and fourth of November, and, you know, the K-1 Center has been such a heart of Fairhope for so long. When it was the high school, my parents graduated from there, I went to school there. I don't think you can find anybody that's lived here for very long that doesn't have some connection to it. So it is such a wonderful thing that the city's going to be able to do something with that and keep that facade. And we have, one of the things that we wanted to do with this centennial celebration of Fairhope High School was to have pavers that would be commemorative of the teachers, the principals, the people who have come before, the teachers that are there now that have really made our schools what it is. So that's part of the celebration. We're going to start on Friday night at the homecoming, I mean, excuse me, at the senior recognition game, Recognizing Homecoming Queens, and I think we have third?
Fifty-four people.
I'm terrible with numbers. It's a good thing I didn't teach math.
Thirty-two.
We have Miss Sandra Bishop from 1952, and we have fifty-four that are coming, about half of those from out of town. I mean, that's an amazing number of ladies that are going to be introduced in groups of ten at the game that on Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m., this is another fabulous story. The Fairhope High School and the middle school baseball players are going to play a game against the old timers. Now, we tried to get, Ms. Nelson has been to every class reunion for the last two or three years, and all the guys were really excited about playing, right up until the time that they had to put their money where their mouth was. And now they've decided that if there were not enough EMTs, that they probably wouldn't be able to do that, but we do have a bunch of younger guys from the nineties, the two thousands, and so we have some old timers that are going to play. What do you call that kind of baseball where you do it softly? Slow pitch baseball.
It's slow pitch.
Yeah, it's kind of easy, even for those people from the nineties. I'm not much into sports either, I'm sorry. Yeah, probably. So they're going to have a baseball game, they're going to have bouncy houses for the kids, it's going to be anybody that wants to come to participate and watch that, and the high school coach has been so supportive to work with us to get this situated, and he did a camp last week with the middle school, and so he wanted to involve those boys too, and they are so fired up, and he looks at that as a way to draw them into high school sports and to make that connection. And, oh, I forgot to say this about the homecoming parade, we had all three elementary schools and the middle school and the high school having floats, and so it was truly a community thing. Okay, so back to my chronological, ten o'clock on Saturday morning, that big party. Then at 3:30, there will be a paver and celebration of the Fairhope High School, there's going to be a paver dedication in front of the K-1 Center, and that will be Baker's Dozen, which was one of the choirs that were, that had been around for a long time at Fairhope High School, will perform. We've got some, I don't want to say old principals, ex-principals and other official people that will be saying a word or two, and so it's going to be a nice little celebration there. And then we will walk around the corner or through the woods to the new Pelicans Nest, the outdoor classroom at the pavilion at the thief for an outdoor party from four to seven to celebrate, you know, everything at Fairhope. So do you have any questions for me, because I know I've been kind of all over the place?
Yeah, I just want you to make sure the public knows those dates again. This is in November.
November, Friday, November the third will be the football game, Friday, November third, and you will have to buy a ticket, unless you are a former homecoming queen, you will have to buy a ticket to go to the game, and that's eleven dollars. And then Saturday morning, November fourth, that's all free, as far as I know, that's right. Okay. And then 3:30, the celebration for the paver dedication, that's free, and then fifteen dollars a ticket to come to the event at the Pelicans Nest.
The pavilion.
Oh, oh, yes, I forgot about the t-shirts, thank you so much. They have, we have these great t-shirts. Ms. Mary Louise Nelson here, when she was a teacher at Fairhope High School, one of her projects that her Girl Service Club did was they have a yearbook from every class from 1926 to the present that did a yearbook. Now, during the war years in the forties when they didn't have paper, they had these little like autograph things homemade that they did that they put together, and she's got one of those. They are in archival boxes at the top of the library in a safe place, and where was I going with that? Something, oh, the t-shirts! The very first year, they had a pirate ship in their yearbook, and that's the t-shirt that's on back of, that's the pirate ship that's on back of the t-shirt, and that's what they're using for the high school kids this year that are the 100th anniversary graduating class, they get to order those t-shirts too. Those t-shirts are online at FHS100.com.
So everything that you need to know about our centennial Fairhope reunion is on FHS100.com.
My husband would love you, he's always telling me to net it out, get to the bottom line. But you did it, because I do not do that well.
I got you, Ms. Linda, I got you.
Okay, do y'all have any questions?
That's it, thank you so much.
And I want to thank the council for your support, for what the city has done to make all this possible. I think it is such a wonderful thing to bring the community together, both old Fairhope and new Fairhope, because we have everybody that's participating in this, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If you have any questions, you can ask somebody else besides me.
Good job, Ms. Linda.
I want to wrap this up, but just really want to thank these three ladies, they have worked again tirelessly, especially Ms. Nelson and Ms. Tate, and putting this together. Ms. Nelson, I know I probably started visiting with her two years ago. There will be a bronze pirate that will be made to put in the K-1 Center once it's renovated to commemorate that building as, you know, as the K-1 Center and give a history of that. They've had a large pirate made that's going to be there this week, or the next weekend, but they've sold over, right at three hundred pavers to go ahead and start that paving project to alumni for former principals, teachers, and we've started laying those bricks out now. We'll continue to sell those in front of the K-1 Center, that link is on our line, online on the city's website, just like we do bricks in downtown, they'll be there. So it's a great addition to that block of town to be able to do pavers there and to commemorate it as, you know, for the 100th graduating class and do that right there in front of the K-1 Center where, you know, a lot of them went to school or graduated from. It's a great project.
Yeah, pretty cool.
Anything else, Linda?
The kind of thing I would like to say, because this will be available at some point. When I did the pirate project, I really didn't even know I had, I didn't know what I had at that time. Someone put in my hands a little autograph book which served as their yearbook, and it was a teacher here that put these autograph books together for these kids, and there were thirteen kids in this class, and of course, the teachers would take them with a little brownie camera lined up, and she cut them all up and gave each one of these kids one of these, and of course, it was mini-grapged and it was very hard to read, but I've managed to decipher what it is with technology, and it will eventually be, a copy of it will be in the historical museum. Everyone can walk by, it actually dates and says we will call the pirates for the first time in 36, they changed the colors, and by the way, they changed from cougars to pirates, and they changed the colors, and this is documented in this little booklet that was very hard to read, but anybody knowing Leo Keller handed it to me in 1997, '96 at the dedication of pirates, and I think I found who needs this, and I really didn't even know what I had until I had time to really look at it, and it is a precious, precious piece of history which will be preserved.
At the museum.
We're in the process, it just takes a while, I need to find somebody who will find it, but it will, we will have copies in the library and also in the historical museum and possibly somewhere else. We definitely will have copies, so you'll be able to see the early history.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, and the museum also has a great display right now of that history of the high school, so for anybody who wants to go by the museum and see that, they put together a great, a great display of that also. Okay?
Now, you may excuse, otherwise, we're going to keep on thinking of things to say.
Yes. All right, ladies.
That concludes my report.
That's right, thank you. All right, council comments. Counsel, oh, I'm sorry, did I skip, yeah, all right, I'm sorry, I skipped. Public participation, please, three minutes, agenda items five through thirty-nine.
Five and six.
Excuse me, so seven through thirty-nine.
How are y'all? Brian Brett, 455 Magnolia Avenue here in Fairhope, and I'm here to speak in favor of a pending project that's going to be coming before the city, the Vatan Project, which is on the corner of Magnolia and Church, and I am one of the owners of the property immediately adjacent to that project to the east. We follow this project pretty closely since we're the next-door neighbors and seen the renderings, and it looks like a really well-thought-out project, very tastefully designed, lower density than some prior versions that have been kicked around, great attention to green space, great attention to taking care of trees, and I just think it will be a really nice addition to the town. We're very pleased to see it, and we hope y'all give it your great consideration, which I know you will.
Thank you, Brian.
Not every day a neighbor comes and speaks in favor of something.
Yeah. Be a good neighbor. Yeah, I don't know about that. Anybody else? Public participation, three minutes, agenda item seven through thirty-nine. All right, seeing none, we will close the public participation, and we will now go to council comments. Councilman Burrell.
I made an awful lot of comments in the work session, I think I'm done for the night. I'll remark on these items as we go through them.
Very good. All right, well, Councilman Conyers?
No comments here, I'm good with that.
All right, so looking forward to this, I guess the kids down for the Halloween, that's always a precious sight, all the kids running around downtown, so if you get a chance to get out, please get out and just enjoy the kids, and that's all I have to say as far as the council comments. All right, so now we will go to agenda item thirty, well, yes, that's right, Hunter, sit down. Thirty-four, agenda item thirty-four.
Still, Hunter.
Agenda item thirty-four, Lindsey Sins of the Junior Accretory of the Eastern Shore is requesting permission for a road closure of Bancroft Street from the intersection of Fairhope Avenue to Oak Avenue on Sunday, December the 10th, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the Jolly Jog, a proposed half-mile fun run for families to raise funds for the organization.
Move the grant request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Agenda item thirty-five, requests Fairhope East K-6 Parent Teacher Corporation, Fairhope West Parent Teacher Partnership, and J. Larry Newton Parent Teacher Organization request permission to close streets in downtown Fairhope on Saturday, March 2nd, 2024, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for the Eighth Annual Pirate Dash, and require electricity at the start-ending point of Race on the Bluff, Henry George Park, along with barricades at Major's Road intersection to protect runners.
Make a motion, we approve the request.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. All right, thirty-six, requests Mayor Reiser, Executive Director of Fairhope Film Festival requesting the use of the Welcome Center on Section Street as our box offers from Wednesday, November the 8th, 2023, through Sunday, November 12th, 2023. Times are listed on letter of request and signage and additional publicity in the city notifications from October the 1st, 2023, through November the 12th, 2023, and a minutes of, and a minimum of six pole banners to be hung fourteen days prior and during festival from October 26, 23 through the end of November the 13th, 2023.
Councilman Martin, may I, may I speak on this before a motion is made, because we might want to modify it a little bit? In the work session, there was talk that there was a conflict, there was another event. What was, what was the other?
That was Hunter.
We didn't know at the time.
Did you have any dates?
No.
The, I know for sure on, what's the first date here? October 26th, there are only two banners, spots available, not the six, but I believe after that, unless something came in the last couple, few days, the, the rest of those should be free. I think the October 26th is a.
Is the conflict.
Is the, is definitely.
So if we change that to October 27th, would that eliminate that entirely, that conflict?
I believe so. And I'm checking, I believe that's a.
Seems like a pretty simple solution, right?
So they, the other people, just a quick question before we do that, time-wise, we're having a banner from the 26th to November 13th. There's no time extension for the guys that have it on the 26th, or is that the end of the time they will have the poll?
Those are the standard requests come in, three banners for a two-week period, so.
Okay, so we'll have, okay, got you.
So this is a special request, and so it kind of, it goes against what we typically allow, but since they're requesting, we want this to succeed. I mean, I think everybody wants this to succeed, and also, so I would suggest maybe editing that to October 27th, and it would be six pole banners through the end of November the 13th. I mean, technically, it could end on the 12th because the festival's over on the 12th, if you wanted that, if somebody needed those banners or the poles. And the other thing that it's not on here that they had requested was to hang a banner across the road. I want to get your feedback on that. And the race does, the, the grand man does, but I think it's maybe race day only, but could you allow it like during the film festival? You know, during the, maybe it's for, say, from the 7th, I'll say from, if you did it from the 7th through the 12th, just to let the locals know that there's a film festival going on.
Where, so let's be particular, where are we talking about if, if we were going to do it across the street?
I don't typically hang them across the street except for start and finish banners for like Spring Fever Chase, and those are typically like the, the area are already set up to hang those across the street, so in order to, there may be some locations where we had Christmas decorations that we could, but it, some of that's going to depend on where they're asking for that at. We've never hung a banner across the street for them in the past.
So.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, we never have, so we just need to look at the locations where they're wanting to hang that.
Right, and I've seen it in other cities, when I was practicing in Gainesville, they hung banners across the streets, but I think you have to hang them in a, in a particular manner, the logistics behind that, so the trucks or cars and all that has to come into play, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I know some of the finish and end, while the streets are closed, that's not a problem.
That's what I'm saying, usually with the races, the reason we can hang across the street, this is what I'm thinking, is because we have those streets closed and we don't have vehicles coming, so we would have to think about trucks of any, yeah, and all that kind of stuff, so.
I do think it's good for people, for visibility of the event while it's going on, people can know in the city that's going on.
Yeah, I think we should have something across the street to park in the parking deck, I've said that.
They have hung a banner on the railing of the Welcome Center, like that railing there, because that serves as their ticket office, but they've just never done one across the street. So, I mean, if that, that would, you know, be a compromise, maybe that would be helpful, I don't know.
Or if it's, if it's possible to get with the public works and choose a location, and if they say it's feasible, it's feasible, and if they say it's not feasible, it's not feasible.
I don't have a problem with it, you know, it's this, do we have, it's so, I don't want to try to get in the weeds here, but, I mean, is there ordinance towards this, is there something, you know, because what's going to happen is, you know, everybody, that's what I'm about, yeah, what's going to happen is.
If anybody makes their special request for, that's why it's on here, if it wasn't a special request, it wouldn't be on the agenda, they would just go fill out the form and say rent the civic center, otherwise it wouldn't be on the council agenda.
Yeah, I get it, I just want to talk about it.
We just granted two special requests prior to this motion.
Yeah, so, so, so we'll make sure that, I'm just making it, I'm just making it public that this is a special request, that we are not setting a precedent here.
Well, so was thirty-four, and so was thirty-five.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I don't know what that looks like for, if it's not a special request, so we would have to look at that as well.
I actually tried to call Mary Reiser this morning to find out exactly where she wanted to hang that banner, so I'd have more information, I did not hear back from her, so I'm happy to check with them and see where that location is and investigate it.
Here's my motion.
I don't have a problem with that.
To, to grant the request with the change of the six pole banners being November, I know I wrote so much on it.
October 27th.
October 27th through November the 12th, actually, we can do, and that's what you said at first.
Yeah, well, they may not want to take it down on Sunday, but, I mean, the staff may not want to come out on Sunday.
Okay, well, we'll do the 13th then, okay.
Yeah, I just made it the 20th, the 13th, so October 27th.
Through November.
Through November 13th.
Right.
And to authorize the mayor to work with the film festival to see if it's feasible to hang a banner across the street. Nice motion.
All right. You got a second?
A second.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. So Lisa, are we amending this, is this what we're doing? Do we need to, this is amendment motion, correct?
Well, I just made a straight motion, I don't know that you have to make a motion to amend that on something so minor.
And the banner, just for clarity, that's only during the days of the festival operating, right? Across the street?
Yes, yeah, make that noted too.
That's what I'm saying, that's a big change.
That's a big deal.
So let's amend the motion, and so that's an amended motion.
So the motion would be to grant the request to use the Welcome Center on the date specified, November 8th, November 12th, and signage and additional publicity and city notifications from October, October 1st through November 12th, six pole banners to be hung, be thirteen days prior to the festival, October 27th through the end of November 13th, and to allow a banner to be hung across the street during the days of the festival with the mayor and the film festival.
So what are those days? So what are those days? What, what, what are those dates of the festival?
Eighth through, eighth through twelfth.
The eighth through twelfth.
Thursday through Saturday.
So, so that's the date, so the eighth, so, yeah, November the eighth through the twelfth for the banner across the street, or, or.
That's a Wednesday.
Or say November the eighth through the thirteenth, actually. We can do that, yeah. Let's do that, Lisa, November eighth through thirteenth. All right, I got amended motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Say nay. All right, now, can I get a, a motion or a movement on this that we just amended?
You wanted that to be the motion to amend it?
Yes.
Now I want a motion for final adoption of the amended.
For the amended, yes, sir, that's what I'm doing. All right.
All right, second, if you were making a motion, second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Say nay. All right, motion carries. Very good. Item number thirty-seven, application for restaurant liquor license for Brian Caldwell Cat Food Restaurant Group L L C D B A Plain and Level, located at sixty-one North Section Street, Fairhope, Alabama, three six five three two.
Make a motion. Will you approve liquor licenses presented?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Say nay. Motion carries. Item thirty-eight, applicant for restaurant liquor license by Misty Rider R. Bistro L L C D B A R. Bistro, located at one nine two seven zero U. S. N. Highway ninety-eight, Fairhope, Alabama, three six five three two.
Make a motion. Will you approve this liquor license as well?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
See, a lot of people happy to see that.
Yeah, right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Say nay. Motion carries. Item number thirty-nine, application for special events license by Camel, Camell, Camel, Kamal, yeah, Constantine, Southern Buyers Group L L C D B A Piggly Wiggly Wine Walk, November the eighth, twenty twenty-three, Fairhope Civic Center, one six one North Section Street, Fairhope, Alabama, three six five three two.
Make a motion. Will you approve the application for special events license?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now, the chief has said that Officer Nolte approved this one, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Say nay. Motion carries. All right, all right. Now we're back to item, agenda item number five. All right, public hearings, can someone introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Thank you. All right, Hunter?
Yes, sir. Forgive me, I got a, some, we had some technology problems, so I'm getting, I'm going to shuffle some slides around. But let's get started with agenda item five. This is a P U. D. Amendment for the Hilltop P U. D. Only on Lot twenty-nine is what we're focused on here. This did go to the planning commission for a recommendation of approval. It's come to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval, as well as staff recommendation. In general, and just to refresh everyone's memory, this is the Hilltop P U. D. On the screen is the zoning ordinance. This is down Section Street, and the property we're really focused on, on this amendment, is highlighted on the right. I'm going to kind of skip for the sake of expediting what's really being asked for here. If we need to go back and forth, we can. Almost, it was one of those details that was, I think, missed when we adopted the P U. D. As unzoned property, the way this developed, there was a hundred-foot highway construction setback that was required along Section Street. Being in the city, that does not apply, so the request with this application was to revise that setback to twenty feet. Staff did look at this, and we wanted to align that setback at least with the thirty-foot of the adjacent neighbor to the south. Applicant has no problem with that. So the, that's, that's the request. This allows the building to be pushed kind of out of a drainage way, blue line, up to the, closer to the sidewalk, allows the parking to be kind of on the side of the building instead of in front. I think all of that was a positive. The only other amendment being tweaked here is two paragraphs added that gives a little bit more clarity on what the building might look like. These are some massing renderings, not the final layout, but it shows kind of how it will be to the, the front, push to the front a little bit, out of that low area. You can see some trees in there heavily, are kind of faint, their transparency's on there, but those will be there landscaped, and you can see how the side, the parking kind of resides in the, the side of that building. Staff does recommend approval for this case to amend the front setback up for Lot twenty-nine from one hundred feet, as measured from the center line of Section Street, to thirty feet, as measured from the property line, and to add the two proposed paragraphs clarifying the intent of Lot twenty-nine. And I believe Trey Genwright with Jade Engineering is here to speak if you have any questions.
Okay, yes, great. So before we open the hearing, is this before, where, where is this on stage? Before the four-way stop? I remember this came across when I was on the planning commission, I'm trying to remember. Is it by the four-way stop on Twin Beach section? Where is that?
This is further south of the four-way stop. Are you familiar with where the tuna, the seafood?
Yeah, the seafood on the right, uh-huh.
It's on the, the opposite of the road.
Okay, got it, that's right, okay, very good. All right, all right.
If you, there's a boardwalk, you can see kind of a pedestrian boardwalk built, that, that goes through this.
All right, very good. So we will now open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that wants to speak on this particular zoning ordinance, number twelve fifty-three, please.
Good evening. Trey Genwright, Jay Consulting.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for having us this evening. As Hunter said, we're only asking for the reduction in the front setback. The intent would be to allow the building to be set up in more of a residential format, so that the parking would be forced to the side of the building and not out front. It brings the building up to the, to the pedestrian corridor. As you were pointing about the location, you'll notice that covered bridge out there when you go past it, so it's just to the south of that covered bridge, as the pedestrian corridors are, corridors are already there. And so in exchange for reducing that setback, we added some, some verbiage that will kind of give guidance on what that structure looks like and the intent of that structure, and so it gives a form and, and fit to that building, so that we get what we're asking for. And we gave the elevations there. It's a very good indication of what the plan is to build that. So with that being said, if you've got any questions, I'd love to hear from you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Trey. You might want, somebody in the public may have questions for you, so we still have the public hearing open, so if anybody has any questions for Mr. Genwright, please come up to the podium, state your name, your address, speak on this particular matter. All right, I don't see anybody. We'll close the public hearing. We'll let this lay over for the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thanks, Trey. All right, Hunter, I think you have the next one as well.
Yes, sir.
Someone will introduce this, please.
I'll introduce ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. And this is a rezoning request. It's C Z twenty-three point zero four. This is a request of Ryan Baker with Walcott Adams on behalf of Philip and Michelle Goodwin to, that requests to rezone the subject property from B four Business and Professional District to B three A Tourist Resort Lodging District. I'll show you, I think a image speaks louder than words. This is the zoning map. This is Pine Street, just outside the C B. D. is where this, this location is, and on the left, you can see the property highlighted in blue. On the right is the aerial. There is an existing building on the property that is a duplex that has been historically utilized as two long-term rental units. Here is a shot of the, the ruckery, as it was known, duplex, and, and this is the building as it exists today. The request, this is, as we said, this is just outside the C B. D., which allows short-term rentals. This is also zone B four, which does not allow short-term rentals, so if it was two houses over or zone something else, short-term rental could be there. That is the intent of these two units, not to add units, not to tear down the building, not to do anything else, but to utilize the two existing buildings as short-term rentals. Of course, with any zoning change, we look at all of the other uses that may be allowed. We did not see too many problems with the uses proposed here. I think if, the, the ones that would be are potentially a challenge, would have to go to Board of Adjustment, so there is another review. But again, with the building and the way it sits today, I don't think some of those are likely. There's, there was no conditions on this one. We do recommend approval. Planning Commission is unanimously recommending approval as well.
Hunter, can you go back a few slides, one more? So, right here, it says that the owners intend to keep structures a duplex. B three A, I think this is an important point that was missed. B three A allows for two-family dwelling and B four does not.
So you're kind of taking a non-conforming structure and making it conforming?
Correct.
Yes, so good point.
And will allow for short-term rentals, which is allowed in the C B. D., but not outside of B four.
Right.
So we're really correcting ourselves here.
In the north, in the non-conforming building, there, we definitely are.
Right.
There was a little question about extending the C B. D. Part of the C B. D., especially as it rests in the gully, some of the reasons we haven't extended that far in the past is a, a little lighter uses on the periphery, as right on the side of the gully is residential. We really don't see that, that being a problem here. The castle is nearby, it is zone B three A as well.
Yeah, I, I got a quick question before I open the hearing. Did they come to you with this, or did we find out, that we initiated the change to make them correct, or to put them in good standing order?
Yeah, this was, the owners made this request. Actually, the discussion started with, do we, we want to expand the C B. D., but I think the, the end result is being allowed, use this, new owner allowed, use this building for short-term rentals.
I mean, I think that's reasonable. The only thing about this that would give me any heartburn is the, the hotel motel, but that's got to go through the Board of Adjustments to.
That's correct. So if any additional units, any three or more units requires an M O. P., so if an additional unit was created, that would trigger a planning commission review. Then we get in that hotel, bed and breakfast, what is it? So, which may require other reviews as well.
Yeah, and this is right, right here on Pine, so, yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah, anyway. All right, let's open the, let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on this particular ordinance amendment twelve fifty-three?
Counselman, Ryan Baker from All Stars Rennell, I'm here with Philip Goodwin, is here to answer any questions I have.
All right. So we own, when you saw that picture, we have the house that's next door, and it has a shared drive, fifteen-foot drive, and there, I've got some fabulous plans for our house to do renovations, so we bought that in order to maintain the whole space and have control of the space. So having an ability to do short-term rental, my wife's from here originally, and part of the requirements of the marriage is we've come back down here, so, and through years, that's our retirement spice, and that's what we're moving this space into, that kind of, that will be our domain.
I wish we can collect everybody like you to come to us and do our short-term rentals and quit doing it like they're doing it right now. We got people all over town doing short-term, but they're not coming and doing it correctly, so we can get the appropriate.
It does create a problem for people that are investing into the short-term rental, and y'all not getting the taxes.
That's exactly right.
Competing against it, so it is something that, I mean, if this was my true profit center, it would create me a problem.
Yeah, yeah, so that's something that we've talked about, and I'm kind of getting the weeds here, but I think we need to put it back on the table at some point and, and kind of tighten that up here.
He's created, I mean, I'm so impressed with them and what he's done for our house, and what we have planned for that space is a kind of high-end, short-term rental, and we're actually going to take that drive into more of a green space and create it where it's just more conducive that somebody just parks and they then enjoy.
Right.
Coming straight into the city and have a big enjoyable green space between our house and that space. That's the future plan.
It's a good vision. God bless. Anybody want to speak on this in the public, have questions? Public hearing is open. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, y'all have any more questions? Any comments?
I, I think this property lends itself to be in short-term rental. I think there's some others that are probably in the short-term rental business that probably are not in the appropriate neighborhoods for doing that, but I definitely think.
Catching the, the taxes of it either, because it's like a competing type situation.
I, I think this property certainly makes sense to be short-term rental.
I think so, too. All right, thank you, guys. We'll let this lay over to the next councilman. All right. Agenda item number seven, Hunter.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is a site plan review that was at our last planning commission meeting with an, a, a corresponding M O. P. So a lot of the utilities and, and those drainage things like that were handled during the M O. P., but with the site plan portion of this, it does come to city council. The S. E. Civil is here, the, as the engineer on behalf of the owner. They were the applicants for R. W. L. L. C. We also have the architects. David Ryan, I think, is here to speak if we have any questions as, as the owner interest. This is a property we've seen before, and I'll kind of just jump into that if we need to get back to some details, but this is on the northeast corner of Magnolia and Church Street. Zoning is B two, it does lie within the C B. D. It's right on the edge, I want to make note of that. This is the boundary of the C B. D. The aerial and existing, what's existing on the site is shown on the left. I'm going to jump right into the pretty pictures because I think we've seen some projects in the past, but I think this image, that was a very early concept, speaks to what I think the main goal was, and, and there's a lot of great trees on the site, right on the corner, some in the right-of-way, some on the property, and the, from the onset, it was mapping where those trees are and make the buildings work within those trees. That was a, I think that's a challenge with some of these mature trees, the health of what they are, and, and hope to recover some of those trees. But this was the, the guiding principle, this main image.
Yeah, and, and, Hunter, I'm going to interrupt you because, because I'm on the planning commission. It's important to note that these trees you see in this, in this photo, this was superimposed on that design. These are the actual trees.
Yes.
This is not an artist, well, it's an artist's rendition of the structures, but the trees, that, that's the way they are.
We really debated back and forth, and you can see the traffic signal there, you know, that's kind of.
Jimmy ran a bicycle.
Right, right. It is inaccurate, you know, as, as, as much as possible, and I think that was, that was done very well. An elevation from the church street sides on the, on the screen here, and what we're looking at overall, I'm going to, I'm going to jump ahead to a site plan. What we're looking at overall is seven buildings. Five of those buildings are a single-family residential structure. They're forty-foot tall, but they're, they're a single-family residential structure. The two buildings on the bottom of the screen are fronting Magnolia, are ground floor, commercial, with one unit each in each building, so nine units total, and with, located within. So, nine units total and sit with, located within seven buildings. Two commercial, seven residential units.
And what was formally approved, Hunter?
Kind of had some flexibility, but 12 to 14 units. So, we're cutting five units out here. And I think saving all the trees, the, we don't have driveways entering right onto Church Street. So, that's some of the main differences, I believe, when you compare the two. And I'll show this, most of the access, vehicular access is off of this drive. We have 14 parking spaces for the, the nine units.
So, the, so where's the parking space? I, I think I, this kind of came up when I was on the planning commission as well. It has changed a lot, I think, because at one point, I think, they were talking about having a, a wall, right? Is this the same one, Hunter? We was talking about having a, some type of raised wall.
That, that might have been the previous iteration.
Okay, yeah.
So...
Yeah, okay. And then is the parking on the bottom?
Go, go back a slide.
Is the parking on the bottom floor?
Go back one more. Where's the, where's the plan view of it?
Let's go to...
Yeah. What, what real is this?
Magnolia.
It's coming off, uh, Magnolia.
Oh, that's Magnolia. Okay, and then they go into the actual complex. Yeah, yeah.
From the interior.
From the interior, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, okay, cool.
So, uh, per ordinance being in the CBD, each residential unit is required to provide one parking space, so that's seven spaces required. 14 are being provided, um, in, in this project. This also, as a use, was a little unusual. It did have to go to Board of Adjustment first, then Planning Commission, and certainly through the wringer, through us. Do want to mention the height. We're going to be measuring that building height, that each building pad, 40 feet, nothing above that 40 feet. Setbacks are not in place in the CBD. There's build two lines. We actually require those to be built up at the street level. With landscaping plans has seen extensive reviews. Really going to work with the, the city. And, and I'll tell you one thing, even before this approval, um, it's kind of shocking, but we did have a request for a meeting one day with the arborists come in and, uh, with, with the applicants. And they said, hey, would it be okay if we go ahead and start fertilizing these trees and prepare them for the shock in case we do get approval? You know, absolutely. So, uh, happy to see that. I think that shows the levels of, of, of intent here. Sidewalks are the unique thing. So, I want to go back real quick to this. Is Church Street on the left. In the CBD, a project is requ, any new project is required to install a eight-foot sidewalk. With council approval, that can be reduced to six feet. That is what is being provided, but at the city's request, this is Public Works, Horticulture, Planning, we've all looked at this, and there's a few areas where these tree roots would not, trees wouldn't make it if we, we got that strict. So, what we're asking here is let us to work with the, the applicants as they get into construction, work as best we can around the trees, create some tree wells if we need to, keep an ADA accessible sidewalk. But when you go measure every inch, is it going to be six feet? Probably not, but the, it's same, you know, that, we're, we're kind of asking that for that, not the applicants. So, we do want to save these trees on the Church Street side. I believe, and you can vet this, I believe we've discussed garbage pickup and it's going to be from a private, um, entity. There's some fences on the property. They're meeting everything. Stormwater is reviewed in the MOP, tying into our existing stormwater system. Signs will be approved. We don't have any request for exceptions, so they'll meet our sign ordinance. Utilities were reviewed and all utilities will be located behind buildings. So, I think some of the previous iterations required meter banks out in the road. These will be behind the buildings and out of sight in, uh, bit space. Staff does recommend approval of SR 21, 23.05. We do have three conditions. No part of any building shall extend beyond 40 feet from the natural elevation of each building pad. Signs plan shall conform to the sign ordinance. And I'll go back, but we do require a hold harmless agreement for staircases proposed in the right-of-way. Best place to see that is going back to this image here. You'll notice these are metal staircases that are elevated above the green space, if you will. How to accommodate and get accessibility there and not damage those roots? This is something I think was a great solution. If we ever need to, I think we've got dash lines, maybe some other utilities in there. If we never get, ever need to get in there and work, we're going to have to get those stairs removed and, and attach them back when we, uh, get through with our work. We've already got that hold harmless agreement, so, uh, a drive, so it's ready to go now. And that was since the Planning Commission meeting. This did come to you with a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission as well. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. We also have the architect, engineer, and owner here as well. And just a reminder, this is not a public hearing. As a site plan review can be approved tonight, if you so choose.
Can't be approved tonight, yeah. I, I move to approve the request.
Second. Good-looking project.
All right. So, we have, um, a motion for approval and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Really want to have a discussion on that.
You want to have a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, let's have a discussion. Yeah, all right.
I just want to say, I do know, we see a lot of these, and I know a lot of people don't like change and they don't want this built, they don't want that built. But this is like a beautiful project, I mean, I tell you. It'd be a really nice addition to downtown there, huh?
Yeah, I, I, I was, when this first came across, I was on the planning commission.
I'm going to be jealous of whoever lives there.
Yeah, it's really nice.
I'm going to covet that house.
Yeah.
I know Mr. Preacher out there is supposed to covet it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, this is, this is a very nice project. Just something fair, we'll be proud of, especially right there and keeping the trees. That was a big deal. So, so, yep, very good, very good. Hunter, you have the next one as well?
Yes, sir. And...
Okay.
That is a simple extension request. I'm going to pull up the slide just to make sure if you have any questions. While I'm pulling that up, the, if you recall, we did have approval for a, it was a Starbucks in the, what is the Eastern Shore Shopping Center. Roughly on the screen, it resides here in between the two ingress and ingress. Just for a refresher, this is the site plan and the landscape plan and the conditions that we approved. Getting back in, the big lot shopping center ha, has a stipulation in the contract for that shopping center that no construction project can begin, be under operation in that parking lot during the holiday season. That's mainly Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, if it wasn't for that stipulation, they would have pulled or had, had a building permit coming up soon before the expiration. The thought here is we give them 180 days for, uh, uh, extension. They pull the permit in January and that triggers our site plan review. So, no, we have no problems with this request if Counsel so chooses to grant it.
All right.
Move to grant the site plan extension request.
Second.
Not a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is a resolution. The City of Fairhope, Alabama enters into an agreement with the State of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation related to the project for sidewalks along Parker Road from CR 98 to CR 42 US 98. Project number CR P E S 0223. Can I get a motion on this? Anybody? This here, we talked about in, um, in work session. This is, I think, Richard gave us explanation on this. This is grant money that's given to us, um, for some sidewalks that start at Scenic Road 98 up to, um, Highway 98 or Greeno Road, as we call it. We had, we had a...
Yeah, and that's through the Eastern Shore MPO. And, and the idea, just what the MPO was thinking is, you know, it's one of the major corridors that we have between Scenic and, and 98. And we have the Triangle project going on just to the north of that. And it'll provide with the multimodal trail that we have that runs from Rock Creek all the way up to 104. It'll be another avenue that people can get to the Triangle Park.
Okay.
It's kind of the thought process behind it.
All right, yes, so they can come down and...
Come down, you're right there, since you turn, you're practically there. You're almost at the park right there. And you have the Eastern Shore Trail that you connect to on the west. So, you got the multimodal trail on the east and the Eastern Shore Trail on the west.
Yeah. Very good, yep. All right. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Did we vote on it?
No.
Okay, okay.
I was waiting for Jimmy to break the question.
Yeah. All right, I have a motion and a second. No other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Agenda number nine, resolution that the City of Fairhope, Alabama enter an agreement with the State of Alabama acting by, through the Alabama Department of Transportation related to project for, I just read that one, didn't I?
Well, the one was the engineering agreement.
Oh, so this is, no, okay, all right, sidewalks along Parker Road from CR 98 to CR 42. All right.
I make a motion, we approve the construction agreement.
My second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, I was slow on that. I just missed part of the work session, so taking me a minute to...
Yeah, yeah, no worries.
...caught up with speed on those and I...
Yeah.
And Richard Johnson did a good job explaining it and how it was broken down. And we just, uh, the mayor was able to slice and dice it. So, uh, you know, a half of a half of a half, and we got it down to where it's not going to cost very much. Oh, and recall that some of that will be picked up by the developer of that corner property as well.
Yeah, I think it was, um, 140K match and then, um, the, we split again with the county with, so it's 70K and it's a total of 340. And I think we had 140 of that, then we broke that 140 down in the split, so...
But if I'm not mistaken, another, uh, nugget is that part of that 70 will be picked up. There's a couple, there's a few hundred feet of that will be picked up by the owner of the property at the corner. Yes, as well.
Oh, okay, I missed that one.
Further beats away at the 70, so it would be less than that.
It would be less than that, very good.
He commented 80,000.
All right.
80,000.
All right, very good. Motion and a second, we voted?
Given voted.
Have not voted, all right. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Agenda item number 11, resolution that the City of Fairhope authorizes the submission of land and water conservation grant to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for construction of park facilities at the North Triangle Park and authorize Mayor Sheller Sullivan to sign all requests or required grant application documents on behalf of the city.
Move to authorize the submission of conservation grant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda number 12, resolution. The City of Fairhope hereby accepts the Gulf Coast RC ND Council's grant award for financial assistance for the community pollinator garden revitalization on South Mobile Street and authorize Mayor Sheller Sullivan to sign all required grant documents on behalf of the city. Our grants specialist, Nicole Love, uh, came to us in the work session on this particular item. There was a number somewhere in the 6,912 and 12 cents that they thought it would cost, or that we had in the budget to contract out to get the kudzu up, um, off the bluff there, um, to pollinate this particular garden. If I can get a...
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
My second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Butterflies, Jim. Butterfly garden.
Is butterflies, bees, you know, yeah, all right?
Any of the above.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
It is.
Yep, all right, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, resolution, the City of Council authorizes the submission of the fiscal year 21 ATRIP 2 grant to ALDOT requesting grant funds to construct dedicated left and right turn lanes on Volanta Avenue at US Highway 98, acceleration, deceleration lanes on US Highway 98 and signalize the intersection and authorize the mayor to sign all required grant application documents on behalf, it should be on behalf of the city. Total estimated project cost is $1,682,000 with the city estimated cost of $301,000.
And I'll add that, uh, Richard said the hard match is about 96,000 on that.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion.
Those are costs here.
Submission of the FY 24 ATRIP 2 grant.
Second.
Yeah, this is a grant that we've, we've gone after a couple of times and hopefully we'll get this grant this time because we really need to get that intersection. That's a terrible intersection, in my opinion, um, especially with the football games coming in and coming out. And now we got the, um, senior living assistants there. So, I'm praying and everybody pray that we get that particular grant this time because we've applied for it before, we haven't gotten it yet. All right, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 14, resolution. Mayor Sheller Sullivan is hereby authorized to accept the sub-grant from the Alabama Emergency Management Agency from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of $57,680 to purchase and install state-of-the-art sirene warning system for mass notification. We also talked about this in the work session.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution as presented.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sure, I'm glad we had the discussion in the work session.
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah. All right, so, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Item number 15, resolution that the Mayor Sheller Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an service agreement between Baldwin County Commission and the City of Fairhope for connectivity to the county extranet for communications and information systems, CIS services at no cost for the initial implementation defined in Exhibit A, but has the option to implement additional services in the future based on the CIS rate schedule. Now, we, Jeff, we, as I read this, we did talk about this, um, in the work session and it says no initial cost setup. And, um, what was that rate? Was there a, we didn't talk about the cost that will come after the initial setup. We, we missed out on that.
Um, we, we've been doing this for years. This is for the radio communications. We've got budgeted 18,500.
Okay.
So, I, I don't think it's really changed much.
Is that the normal cost?
That's the normal cost, yes, sir.
All right, very good. I just noted that we didn't have a number there. All right, thank you. Any further discussion, guys, on this? If I can get a motion and a second.
So moved.
My second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 16, resolution, the City of Fairhope...
Strike that.
Oh, you struck that one, thank you, sir. God bless you, Councilmember Real. Yes, sir. All right, yep. Item number 17, uh, resolution that the City Council approves a contract extension for, um, RFQ Natural Gas Engineering Consulting Services with Magnolia River Service, Inc. for cast iron pipe replacement phases one through six with a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 and authorize the Mayor Sheller Sullivan to execute contract amendment. All right? We talked about this as well. I think Wes came up to the podium.
I move to approve the contract extension.
Second.
All right, and the amendment part is they split the million dollars into 500 and 500. That's what the amended part is for the public's understanding. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just another thing, Jimmy, it's, it's up to that. I question why was it such a round number, you know, and it's, it's up to...
Gotcha. Gotcha, so they don't have to come back to us for, right.
Wes reminded me that I questioned that before.
We saw a clean number with no, yeah, all right.
Seemed too good to be true.
Too good to be true, yeah. I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number eighteen, resolution, that the city council approves the selection of Mayor Sheller Sullivan, RFQ to O'Donnell and Associates, Inc. for professional hydrological services for development of the fourth shallow well at Fairhope Well Field number three and hereby authorize Mayor Sheller, Mayor, to execute a contract with a not to exceed amount of seventeen thousand dollars. We also talked about this, Darrell came up, they're gonna, this is a shallow well, Jimmy, and it's gonna be about two hundred feet and it is in the same aquifer. But this is a carryover from our work session and our agenda that we had last week with all the well works that we have implemented.
I move to approve the selection.
Second.
Yep, all right, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number nineteen, resolution, that the city council approves the selection by Mayor Sheller Sullivan for professional architecture and engineering services for RFQ Fairhope Municipal Pool Rehabilitation to Westmark Design and allow Mayor Sheller Sullivan to negotiate to not exceed to be approved by council. This is for the pool.
I move to approve the selection of Watermark Design.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty, resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the selection of Overstreet and Associates Consulting Engineering for the professional engineering services repressed for quote new sidewalks on Parker Road and hereby authorize Mayor Sheller Sullivan to negotiate a not to exceed fee to be approved by council.
Make the motion to approve the selection.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes. Richard informed us per AL DOT guidelines and then they checked all the boxes, their fee is eleven and a half percent.
Yeah, he made sure that we knew that, all right, engineering fee, yeah. That's a good rate, all right, so I think everybody's happy with that. All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty-one, resolution, to award bid number twenty-three zero three seven to the general maintenance contractors of East Alabama, Inc., D B A G M C Underground for cast iron pipe replacement phase one with a bid proposal not to exceed one million three hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifteen and sixty-seven cents. And this also was by Wes in work session. This is the actual word being done.
I mean, I look to award bid.
All right, got a motion?
Second.
All right, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just would ask, since I wasn't here for this discussion earlier, I know this is a large ticket item, is that, how does that stack up, Wes, compared to where we were thinking? I know we had a lot of discussion in the budgeting process about.
So.
Could be less?
Yes, it came.
I mean, one point two million under budget.
That sounds good, glad they've gotten you up here to say that on record.
Yeah, we were convinced that construction competition was gonna drive this price down, and it did, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, we keep, I love that.
We did a toast.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good work right there, Wes, I tell you. Must be living right. All right, so I have a motion and a second, no further discussion, we'll make the call, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty-two, resolution to award bid number twenty-four zero zero one to Equix Energy Services LLC for Cowpen Creek boring with a total bid proposal not to exceed fifty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And that was my other brother Darrell in the work session that brought that up, and I think this is just a basic boring across the pen.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Item twenty-three, resolution, that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of one new pumper fire truck for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department, the total cost not to exceed eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I think this is our, I think this is our impact fees, right? Yes, these are our impact fees, they're getting this. Yep. It's not our impact fees, okay, very good, all right.
Yeah, I do want to point out that the cost of the truck, we're only paying a third of it in this budget year. And then the, and then the loose equipment costs, approves of the payment of all of it, but it's, we won't be, we'll be paying it in twenty-five or twenty-two. Does it still take that long to get a truck now?
So this is like a two-year build almost?
Two plus.
Three-year build?
Yeah, they're, they're quote thirty months.
Wow, well, highly specialized, but that's still.
Yeah, well.
Really long.
Well, it's done, and I guess you were here for this, Jimmy.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be a pirate truck.
And I make a motion, we approve with the caveat that the mayor and.
Yeah.
Principal Cardwell negotiate the color of the flag.
Yeah, we highly suggest gold. We highly suggest gold.
I'm second, I'm second, the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number twenty-four, resolution, that the city of Fairhope has voted to procure Tyler Technology Time and Attendance Software as a replacement to Chronos System from Tyler Technologies as sole source and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one. The cost will not exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars, this is a budgeted item. Chronos is going out of business, we discussed this in the work session, so this is the particular software for our attendance that we are procuring.
Move to procure the Tyler Technologies time and attendance software.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And Jimmy, also, as we discussed in the work session, I think the annual recurring cost is twenty-nine thousand.
Yep, I did, I was here for that, I got that, thank you.
Yeah, all right, all right, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, a question, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty-five, resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two annual flower procurement, the total cost not to exceed one hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-three thousand and thirty-six cents.
I don't know, you over budget.
This is over budget?
I make a motion, we approve the flower procurement.
Are you just gonna do that, I'll second.
Are we over budget? How much over budget?
Six thousand dollars.
Six K over budget, wow. Are we, yeah, flowers are expensive, man, I, but that's what we do, I guess, six K over budget, I think that's probably the only one today we had over budget, which is good, all right.
They're all learning from Richard, he's a movie.
Yeah, we've come down on the over budget, so that's not bad, all right. Any further discussion, guys? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item twenty-six, resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of the annual reward of the Microsoft three sixty-five license that is on the Omnia Partner Contract two zero one eight zero one eleven oh two with S H I International Org and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, the total amount not to exceed eighty thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
I move to approve the budgeted item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, this is a budgeted item, I think we're on budget. All right, motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number twenty-seven, resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four potting soil from Sun Grow Horticulture, Inc. as the sole source and manufacturer, the cost will not exceed sixty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty cents, this is a budgeted item as well.
Move to approve the procurement.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight, resolution, that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of the twenty-twenty-three lighting of the trees stage miscellaneous equipment and labor costs to Sound Associates, Inc. with a total not to exceed cost of thirteen thousand for the city of Fairhope lighting of the trees celebration on November the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
A second, a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Hold on.
You want to discuss that?
I do.
Okay, all right.
I want to, I want to have some time after this motion to, I'm gonna put the mayor on the spot, but in a good way, okay, so after we vote, I want to bring up something related to this.
Okay, all right, all right, so got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries, all right, what we got?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, I just, Mayor, just for the record, I had approached the mayor, there'd been a lot of businesses on the south end of Section Street, just shy of Morphe, that had been beating me up over the fact that for years they had lights and now the lights don't go that far. And so I had been assured by the mayor that those, not all to Morphe, but.
Not all of them, because they're too large.
Some of them are too large, but that we will have lighting almost to Morphe in the trees that are feasible, I got that on record, thank you.
Yeah, at one point we were doing it, I believe, when I first got here.
You used to go all the way in front of the Methodist Church.
That's what I'm saying, so, but then it just kept, yeah, but then, yeah, so, okay, yeah, yeah, all right, very good point.
We have budget for that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, all right, so.
Past careers without getting mugged now.
Yeah, it, well, you really can tell the difference, though, when it's down, it gets really dark down there from when the lighting just seems missing out. All right, we got a motion and a second, oh, we voted on that, all right, item number twenty-nine, resolution, the city council approves a three-month extension of the Osprey Initiative LLC contract for a total not to exceed cost of three thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cents and authorize Mayor Sheller Sullivan to execute the contract extension. Yeah, this was pretty simple, this is done, and they had a little bit of money left over, so we're extending the contract.
Okay, I was wondering why we, only three months, so.
Yeah, that's what that is.
And then he's gonna continue to monitor for extended period of time, or at the end of three months, we're gonna reassess?
We'll have to do another contract and reassess, yes, yeah, all right. Get a motion and a second?
No.
I know, I'm asking for one.
Oh, motion.
From these two guys.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a second to get it, I'm gonna make a second to have some discussion.
Yeah, I'm gonna get there, but we can first, yeah, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Well, you said it was, that was, that was money left over, but this green sheet says it's that same amount, over budget. So, I wanted a clarification on that, are we, if we have three thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars left over?
If you'll, if you'll look at the resolution there at the bottom, it says the annual cost for the twelve-month service installation totaled twenty-three and the total approved amount that we got the grant for was twenty-seven.
So that would be four, close to four thousand dollars left over.
So you're saying we, we had additional monies from the grant, so.
Correct, we had twenty-seven and we've only used twenty-three, so we're asking for a three-month, three-month extension to use the remainder of the grant money.
I had no problem with that, I just, I just wondered in explanation, when I heard we had extra money, then it said we were over budget.
The way it has it, it is written over, but.
That's fine.
I, I think that's written wrong. Yeah, it should have put the grant amount up there and they left the grant amount on the grant, to show the additional income, so it's really not an over budget item, yeah, so, all right.
It always happens on the things that don't even matter, so. Not that this doesn't, I mean.
Details, it's.
Very insignificant.
God is in the details, God is in the details, all right, here we go, let's see, Jack has messed me up, all right, number thirty, resolution, the city council.
I don't know if we wrote it on it.
Did we not vote on it?
No.
All right, my bad, all right, all right, item twenty-nine, Osprey Initiative, I get a, we hadn't voted, oh, got a motion and a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries, all right, bless you. All right, item thirty, resolution, the city council authorizes and approves the hiring of the new mechanic clerk to allow the current mechanic clerk, pay grade six, who is retiring at the end of January twenty-twenty-four, to work with, train the new employee prior to his leaving. The temporary position will expire upon the retirement of the current mechanic clerk. We've been doing this to overlap, so we don't have a gap in teachings with, this is something.
Move authorize and approve the hiring.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number thirty-one, resolution, reappoint James C. Bailey as a director to the Education Building Authority of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, Saint Michael's Catholic School.
Make a motion, we approve the reappointment?
My second.
Now, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number thirty-two, recommendation, the street and traffic control committee made a recommendation to install a speed table on Summer Lake Street between Twin Beach Road and the tree, and the tree median. Okay.
I move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and Richard went over this in the work session, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item thirty-three, recommendation, the street and traffic control committee made a recommendation to the, to lower the speed limit in the downtown business area to fifteen miles per hour, boundaries being Oak Avenue to Morphe Avenue, north and south, and Mershon Street to Summit Street, east and west, and to change the intersection of South Summit and Nichols Avenue to right turns only using a safety island. This is something Richard spoke about, I think this is a good deal, I think.
Yeah. Kind of thought those recommendations should have been broken into two, just for discussion purposes, too, there's two things in this.
Yeah, we can, so you mean two agenda items or two?
Yeah, I thought it should have been two agenda items.
Yeah, I see, so at one point, all of that was together, I broke it apart once, you know, we could have broke it apart again, but I just, I left those two together, yeah, well, I didn't think it was a big enough deal to fight Lisa, so, but, yeah.
So, you know, the first, the first half of that recommendation is, you know, we gotta slow people down, you know, I think you could think of times in a day where, you know, twenty-five's adequate, but then, you know, you, you can't set it twenty-five because when it's inadequate, it's dangerous and somebody's gonna get hit. I think that the police will, you know, use their judgment in enforcing this if we blow up to fifteen miles an hour, you know, what I, what I worry about is if you're coming, you know, you get down to, let's see, oh, it's Oak now, I thought it, I thought it was Bayou at one time.
So the, the electronic sign is right there at Bayou, so as you come up the hill is kind of when it will post fifteen miles an hour, yeah, that's where it'll post.
Yeah, that's good, I don't know why I thought Bayou, because I thought.
Because that's where that sign is, it's right there, right before the post, yeah. So, one of the questions, I think we all got the questions, was that were we gonna have someone actually enforcing this, police presence, more pedestrian police, these were questions that have been presented to myself, and I can't remember if I.
Well, I've had, I received several emails, I received several in support of this, I received one opposed to this.
But that, that was the question, like, we're lowering it, but is it just for, for, just for the sake of lowering it, or are we actually going to enforce it, those were the type of questions that I was getting and, and they were. and, and, um, and they were concerned about people actually getting hit by the cars, and they, they were for it, but they were just asking if we were actually going to enforce it, so that's something that the chief was have to make sure of, that we actually enforce this, um, I'll probably be the first one to get a ticket.
It's fifteen miles per hour.
Fifteen miles an hour, it's.
I'm still waiting for you.
I mean, fifteen miles per hour is pretty slow.
That's pretty slow, bro, that's what I'm telling you.
I mean, Jack, Jack can almost run that fast.
Yeah.
Hell, I can run that fast.
Uh, so, I'm, I'm.
Correct, correct.
I'm gonna be the first one, it's me.
But, but then, so is it, is twenty-five too fast, or are we doing, are we lowering to fifteen, because we've got a twenty-five, and people are going thirty-five, and not being a, I guess that would be my only question.
That, that's the.
You do need to slow people down, but.
Yeah, and I think, that's my question, that's what I'm putting out, you know, in the, in the, in the universe, but, yeah, I think people are going too fast past the twenty-five, so they're going thirty-five, but now, maybe if we put it at fifteen, they'll go twenty-five.
It's difficult to issue citations in the CBD, unless you just happen to get behind the perpetrator, which most people aren't gonna be the perpetrator if they've got, you know, the, the, the police behind them.
Yeah.
Uh, if they're, if they're not looking at their phone.
And then, you know.
See it.
We can, we can, I mean, you know, we can police it, we would just have to be technologic, you know, have to use AI and camera, you know, they have things to do that with, snapshots.
I don't think people would like that.
People like that, right?
I, I think, you know, it comes down to, I think that more, I'm not gonna say what I wanna say, because the attorney will shoot me. I think it would be very responsible to lower it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have a lot of pedestrian connectivity downtown, and the biggest thing is, we want to put out in the public that people need to be aware of the walkers and how fast they're driving through the CBD district. That's, you know, like, really be, we're, we're trying to send a message that we need to slow down in our CBD district is what we're trying to do. Now, whether we're gonna be able to enforce it, where we got jags whipping around and chasing you down, I, you know, we would have to produce policemen on some type of bicycles or scooters, uh, which they do have to kinda enforce those things. You know, but, I mean, they do have that, you know?
They do, they do in Auburn.
I mean, yeah, I tell you, I've met in many cities.
Get that scooter cop, man.
No, they have the other, the little, the little, um.
I think we should get the teeth for scooter.
You know.
The, oh, the, yeah.
No, they have the, the two wheels, like, the, the, whatever that.
Segway, Segway cop.
Segway deals, like, um, the, like, um, what's that cartoon we used to watch, the Jetsons? Yeah, that little deal, they have that.
Mall Cop.
Yeah, like the mall cop, yeah. Yeah, no, that's a real thing, though, I've seen it in many cities.
Oh, I've seen it.
Yeah, so, I mean, but that would be the only way to answer the questions that I'm getting. It wouldn't be cars chasing them, it would have to be those guys that are riding around and doing that kind of thing, witnessing, I mean, but, um, we just ask y'all to slow down, please.
Can we add an agenda item to buy a scooter?
Yeah. Uh, we already spent so much money on police, dude, why not another item, you know? Um, anyway, where are we?
We're, uh, I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
To, uh, lower the speed limit to fifteen in this, in the downtown business area, and the, at the, between the streets stated, and also to change the intersection of South Summit and Nichols Avenue to right turns only using a safety island, because that's the second key part of the recommendation.
I'll second, I'll.
All right, we have a motion and a second, um, that's a lot to that particular recommendation, it's really a two-part, like Councilman Burrell said, uh, we did it as one, um, any further discussion?
Yeah, you know, uh, Mike Ford comes to mind, you know what I'm gonna say, Mayor? You know, what we do, we can undo.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Something happens and it changes, and it's not working out.
Yeah.
It can be undone.
It's fluid, man.
Correct.
It's fluid, that's for sure, all right, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, item number thirty-four, request, Lindsey Simmons of the Junior Auxiliary.
Council President, we're on number forty.
Oh, we already, oh, so we're on number forty, yeah, very good, all right, blast. Public participation, three-minute maximum. Anybody on anything, three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, I'm Charles Wilson, I live at forty-nine Bartlett Avenue, Fairhope. Back on September eleventh, I spoke to Council President and Jack Edwards, then sent them an email, you were tied up with talking to someone, so I missed you. So I sent another email today to the mayor, to Council President, to Jack, because I had spoken to them before, not to admit you other folks. I'm just gonna read it, because I'd like to put it in the record.
We know Jack is more important than us, so I understand. It's okay, Mr. Wilson, just.
I talked to the Council President first, and then I caught Jack over in the corner, and had a few moments with him, so.
Just peons.
Not to, not to cheat the rest of you. So I'm gonna read this to you, because I think it's important to be in the records. As you are well aware, many citizens are opposed to the graphic sexually explicit pornographic books that are currently housed in the teen children area of our Fairhope Public Library. We will not stop coming to talk to you or to the library board and the liaison until something is resolved. We have a common sense request that the library board of trustees and library director relocate the objectional books from the children's teen area of the library that clearly contain the subjectional obscene like sexually explicit pornographic materials to a section where only adults eighteen years of age and older can access to these books. That's not book banning. And the library board of trustees and the library staff put in place and communicate through the library website clear policies that will prohibit these type books from being checked out by anyone under eighteen years of age, and second, provide a review process of books to be potentially purchased containing this type of material to be identified and the rationale as to why they should be purchased for the benefit of the library and the public. It is concerning to me why our president of the Fairhope City Council has said twice now, the city council has nothing to do with the library, when we know for, based on facts and based on minutes in the city council and the library board of trustees meeting the following. The city council appoints the members of the library board of trustees, don't tell me you're not involved. Number two, the library board with the names of the members is listed as a city of Fairhope Committee, I looked up on the website, big, bold, committee, and we appoint a liaison city council member to the library board. There's over eight hundred thousand dollars in the city budget designated for the library. The city council approves the library's requests for additional funds that are not budgeted from time to time, and the city council approves requests for increase in library employees' salaries from time to time. Some other questions that have come up to me and others as we have talked, who owns the library building and the land on which it sits? Does the city provide any maintenance on the library property? Does the city approve any contracts for large items of expense, example, for HVAC equipment, which they were unhappy that you approved something they didn't recommend, you chose something else? Major repairs to the library building, does the city pay for them or approve them? And construction, the architectural rendering and so forth for the build out of the second floor space. The Fairhope City Council is not powerless to address these objectional books. The city council here, as many city councils do where I've lived in seven different states, periodically approves resolutions or ordinances to address issues. We think it's wise if this city council would either approve a resolution or an ordinance addressing the relocation of the obscene sexually explicit and pornographic books. I know you get tired of hearing it, but the thirty-five I've been through, gentlemen, those words are true, and they're in the children's teen section. That's just not right, just not right. Put them someplace where you gotta be an adult to check them out, and if you want your kids to read it at home inside your house, great, but not inside the library.
So your time, your three minutes have expired, so let's, let's tighten up, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, just one last thing, it's not book banning, it's relocation, and thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Hi, my name's Luke Dassinger, I'm a sixteen-year-old sophomore at Fairhope High School. I'm also a Boy Scout in Troop Forty-Seven, working on my Eagle Scout rank. I want to thank you all for your service to the city of Fairhope. Today, I'd like to read some excerpts from Governor Kay Ivey's letter to Alabama Library Board of Directors. Executive Director Nancy Pack dated October fourth, twenty-twenty-three. I still lack confidence that our libraries are most effectively fulfilling their mission. My previous letter to you, I described the core problem as the exposure of children, youth to inappropriate materials without adequate means of parental supervision. Unfortunately, your response does not persuade me that Alabama libraries have policies in place to strike the right balance in responding to this problem. Your submission makes clear that currently it is up to parents alone, no support from libraries, to prevent their children from being exposed to these materials. Regrettably, the local library policies you submitted in general fail to support parents hoping to protect their children from inappropriate content. The typical policy notes that many libraries, library materials are controversial and offensive, that responsibility for children's reading selection rests with parents and legal guardians, and that the sex selection will not be inhibited by the possibility that children may view them. I agree that the decision of which books to obtain is a distinctly local issue, and I agree that books should not be banned from libraries based on unpopular opinions or content. Libraries should be in a place for exploring a wide variety of viewpoints and ideas. At the same time, however, libraries must not be a place to expose children to inappropriate content without the know, knowledge of and consent of their parents. Libraries should listen to parents when it comes to what content is available in the children's sections of libraries. I want to thank Governor Ivey for her position to support parents who do not wish for their children to be exposed to inappropriate content without the knowledge and consent of the parents or guardians. Books sold by McCormick and Doing It by Witten are examples of inappropriate content that are shelved in the teen section. I don't believe that minors such as myself should be exposed to these types of sexually inappropriate material without parents, parental consent, and I would ask you, the city council of Fairhope, to take Governor Ivey's message to heart and make sure that the taxpayers of Fairhope are not funding the degradation of our city by allowing these sorts of materials to be shelved in the teen section of our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other participation? So, if, so, um, everybody's gonna say something different, right?
Yeah, yeah, I just.
We're gonna keep saying the same thing?
I'm not saying the same thing, uh, Brian Dassinger, one fifteen Kepler Place, um, I actually attended the, uh, the, uh, library board meeting last week, and, uh, you know, something that kinda struck me was, uh, talking to the library board afterwards, and they basically said, um, hey, you know, we don't go through and read the books and determine what books are put where. Um, so it seemed to me that the library board was, you know, somewhat passing the buck to, you know, whoever, I, I guess, the, the library manager is and the teen section manager. Uh, it seems like nobody is really accountable on, on this issue, and, you know, we hate having to come here every city council meeting and say the same thing, um, but, you know, i- it is up to the city council, it's, well, it starts with the city council, I mean, because y'all appoint the boards, um, and y'all basically, you know, provide the funding to the, to the, uh, library, uh, to make these determinations on what, you know, what books are put where. So, you know, I would just ask the city council again to, you know, to, uh, take a, take a lead role in this and listen to, you know, Governor Ivey and what she said, and, you know, just, we're, you know, again, we're not asking to ban the books, we just want them moved to the adult section. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, little close participation. We get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adjournment, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion adjourned.